I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Graham Kazun?
Here.
Tobin?
Here.
Kleiner?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
John Francois?
Here.
Burr?
Here.
Green is absent. Massey?
Here.
President Rodriguez is absent. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Approval of minutes? I see nothing this evening.
Nothing this evening.
Correspondence?
Nothing this evening.
Okay. For the good of the city. Don, are you? Where'd Don go?
He left.
I thought, don't we have every viewer?
Yeah, he probably wanted to go get their office.
Until Don gets here, does anyone want to come up and speak? Please give your, oh no, come on up, young lady. Give your name and your address, and you have four minutes, please. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Robin Stewart. I live at 76th Houston Avenue, Middletown, New York. I am the founder of Dump Stray Animal Rescue. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. The goal of our rescue is to reduce the number of unwanted, uncared-for cats on the streets of Middletown. If left unchecked, these cats will multiply exponentially and, aside from their suffering, will create a huge public nuisance. Our city currently has four major sites, which have become colonies: South Street, Jenung Street, Washington Street, and Beacon, as well as several colonies, small colonies, throughout Middletown. We previously had a fifth large colony, however, with consistent TNR over the last three years, adopting out kittens and placing feral cats in rodent patrol programs. We have been able to close the colony that previously lived near Ock. We have saved the worst of the worst: kittens with infections so bad they have maggots living in them, adult cats with limbs hanging off their bodies, mothers that are starving, struggling to nurse their babies, and the cats that are in such poor nutrition and care for so long they've gone blind. On top of the medical issues we deal with, we also have a constant stream of kittens being born. Each of them needs trapping, vetting, so they can be adopted out. Our goal was to spay-neuter 150 cats this year. We are on track. Unfortunately, it has come with an enormous financial burden. Between caring for these abandoned animals and fighting to save their lives, we are stretched far beyond our means. Our rescue is carrying thousands of dollars in debt. It has only been with the kindness of Dr. Johnson and Zoetis that our heads are still above water. We do not want to see our beautiful city overrun by unwanted animals, and certainly we do not want to see helpless animals continue to suffer. We are looking for continued support of our city to ensure that we stay on top of this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Don?
We have representatives from RBT, our outside accounting firm, to present our annual report for last year: Jonathan Ruiz and Linda Henigan. You've all got electronic copy, and there's a bound copy that if anybody wants it, I'll put it in your box.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks once again for having us. I'm Jonathan Ruiz, a partner with RBT CPAs, the city's external auditors. We welcome and thank the opportunity to come address you tonight. I want to extend a thanks to the treasurer and his staff for, once again, working very professionally with our group, providing all of the necessary documents and information for us to effectively get through the audit process. This year was a very busy year. The city was very successful in obtaining several grants from several different funding sources, so that was something we worked diligently on to get through. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Linda Henigan, a director of our government services practice. She's going to take you through some of the highlights of the numbers. And as always, if you have any questions after tonight's presentation, feel free to reach out to me or Linda directly. We're happy to answer anything that comes up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan, and good evening, everyone. I wanted to give you some highlights of the financial statements and also to tell you that our opinions are clean. Our opinion is that your financial statements are fairly stated, and we've had some very positive results this year. So I'm going to just call your attention to page 12 of the financial statements, which shows your balance sheet, and point out that the city's cash balances are very strong. They've improved from last year, irrespective of your capital projects, where they've been increased because of your borrowing that's funding your capital projects. You also wanted to point out that your fund balance and your general fund increased this year, and you will see that the unrestricted fund balance is approximately $10.5 million. That's a very strong balance sheet and will help you in getting bonding in the future. I also wanted to point out, as Jonathan mentioned, there's several capital projects this year. They represented an increase in your funding overall of all your funds by about $3.7 million, and that helped fund a series of capital projects that came mostly from federal funding. Your general fund revenues and your general fund expenditures were similar to last year. We also wanted to point out that in the back of the report is a description of your federal revenues, which were significantly higher this year. You had over $4 million in just federal revenue alone. So again, we wanted to thank Don and his team for helping us get through the audit. It's been, it's a complicated process, and we appreciate being associated with the city. Thank you.
You're welcome. And thank you for the good news. And Don, you and your staff, thank you very much. We really appreciate all the hard work you've done for us. Thank you very much. All right. Anyone else that would like to address this committee? Please come forward. Remarks of department heads. Economic Development. Maria, please.
Good evening, everyone. Just want to report, we had a community development agency meeting this evening. All our projects are moving forward, along with also our community development office, housing rehab, economic development, and all our facade program that is moving forward with the DRI and such. And, you know, things are progressing with programming at the Paramount Theater, and we're getting ready for our film series, a horror-thon, and first-run movies, and we have a major concert coming up in October. So everything's progressing very nicely, and the great team that's part of all these agencies and departments, and I just want to say thanks to them, too.
Thank you. Any questions for Maria? Maria, thank you very much. DPW Commissioner? Commissioner Twill?
Good evening, all. Just wanted to update you briefly about some of the grants. The auditors were here. They were complimenting the city about the grants that we've gotten. Most of the projects that were done were truly from federal funding or state funding, such as the Roundabout, Maple Avenue Drainage, West Main Drainage, part of the Black Dirt Sewer. We're talking about, you know, almost $10 million there in federal funding that the city taxpayers did not have to do, and we were able to do that and improve the quality of life and our infrastructure in the city. Before you tonight, there's going to be a resolution for the Heritage Trail culvert replacement, which is outside the city of Middletown. It's a culvert in there that goes under the water line and sewer lines and the Heritage Trail that will be coming from Goshen, from Amy's Kitchen, all the way to the city of Middletown. There's a culvert in there with several problems in there with the beavers. They keep plugging it, and it's undersized, so we're going to be replacing it with a significantly larger culvert. And for that, again, the mayor, he was able to get grant from, through Ailing Gunther, and another grant from former Senator Banasek for about $500,000, a total of two grants. However, the project, as it will be before you tonight, awarded to Boise, is going to be an amount of about $263,000. So we are well below budget. All the project is going to be funding through state and federal grants, so that's before you tonight. Also, last Friday, we submitted yet another grant in the amount of $8 million. It will be subsidized, if we are successful, up to 60% of the cost of the $8 million, and that is to replace the raw water line from Kench Reservoir to Shuangang Reservoir. I spoke about it last meeting, and because you authorized to proceed with it, last Friday we did submit the grant application, 60% of the value of the $8 million. Hopefully, we will be successful. This is an extremely important project for us. Street Department, they just finished reconstructing our transfer station for municipal solid waste, rebuilt the whole floor, the entire floor, and the ramp going into it. And our transfer station is out of commission now for about two weeks. Luckily, IWS, which currently they transport our garbage, they gave us permission to use their transfer station, and for that, we are really, really grateful, because otherwise we would have been in real jam to try to reconstruct our transfer station at the same time we're trying to move our garbage out of the city. So we're very grateful to IWS for helping us out. Obviously, we're concerned a little bit about the dry weather, but our reservoirs are still healthy and in the 80% capacity, and we're good with that. DPW, Water and Street Department, they finished installing a drainage project behind the Woolworth Building, and we did the project ourselves because we did not want to wait to do a change order or get an outside contractor to intervene so that the project, the Woolworth Building, could be completed, and we can have all these businesses open in there. Also, a quick note about code enforcement. I talked about it last, spoke about it a couple of weeks ago, and just want to remind people to be, you know, as much courteous to our code enforcement officers as possible. They take a lot of abuse, you know, numerous times, and today, as an example, the abuse became too much, so the police department was called in, and the person who was causing the abuse was arrested. It so happened that he had a warrant for his arrest, too, because of code enforcement issues. Point is, we take code enforcement very seriously. You know, the five code enforcement officers that we have, they work very hard, and we want you just to deal with them, the public, to deal with them in a courteous manner, and we appreciate that very much. Otherwise, we will not tolerate too much abuse for them. And with that, I will stop. If you have any questions for me.
Before anyone else has a question, I'm glad you brought up the code enforcement, Commissioner Twill, and I know at the last meeting you invited any of the aldermen that wanted to ride along with the code. I'd like to request the opportunity to ride with Code Enforcement Officer Ed Steenrod whenever you can put it together for me. And I don't know if anyone else has any questions or comments. Please.
I have a question. Not about the code, but the New York Rising repairs. I know you're starting at the top and working your way down. I'm concerned about the sinkhole on Grant Street. Is that?
That is part, that is part of the project.
Okay, so still working on it?
Yes, that is going on. The sinkhole is not, it's on the side, right?
That's what I call it. I'm not sure what's going on.
Yeah, on the side, yes, on the shoulder, and yes.
Okay.
Yes, that is part of it, and that is ongoing.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, yes.
Alderman Kleiner?
That's another big federal funding, and there's $3.5 million grant money from, you know, so the city is not paying. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Commissioner. We have one resolution tonight where we're transferring $267,000 within DPW budget for traffic and paint, CDL, personal training. Could you just explain that a little bit?
I don't have the breakdown in front of me, but most of the transfer is only for personnel issues. I think, I believe it was an arbitration.
Oh, okay.
A decision, if you recall, and it was a personnel issue, $250,000 in there. Very little is coming to us. The transfer for paint and everything else, for painting, striping the streets, it's from within our budget. The bulk of it is about $250,000, and my apologies, I don't have my notes in front of me.
Okay, no, that's fine.
It's for personnel issues. Yeah, personnel, yeah.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Alderman Francois?
Commissioner, can I also get a request to ride with Court Officer Graham Kazun?
Yes, absolutely. Well, I'll arrange for that. I have to get, obviously, the mayor's consent, and from my department will issue whatever we need to do in there in terms of, you know, hold harmless and all that stuff, so you guys will not sue us if you get injured or something on the job.
All right, thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, sir.
Fire Chief. Chief Lewis, please.
Good evening, everybody. Tonight, we have a resolution for a transfer within the department. Repairs this year have been extremely high this year, keeping the apparatus in service. And for lockers, we're updating all three firehouses with newer lockers. The old lockers are, I think they actually came from Middletown High School like 30 years ago or something, so we're doing that. As far as the grant goes, we did a transfer a couple of weeks ago. The company wrote the narrative, and that's in the works now, along with the city working with it. To correct myself from the last two meetings ago, the parade is October 10th. I think I said the 11th last time, so it's October 10th of 2020. And we did it last year, and we did it again this year, and we decided to make it an annual event on 9/11. We do a stair climb at the firehouse, eight times around, up and down, one side of our house to third-floor backgrounds, actually 343 steps, and that's in memory of the 343 firefighters that perished. So we're going to be making that an annual event.
Thank you. Any questions for the chief? Thank you very much. Treasurer. Mr. Parris.
Hello again. You've got a resolution to vote on tonight for several million dollars, and what it was is, last time you approved the capital budget, and this is the amount of money to fund it. So it's the exact same number as the capital budget. So that's what it's for.
Don, hold on. Any questions for Don? Thank you very much. Police Chief. Chief, who wants you, please?
Good evening. Just a couple of things this evening. First of all, I'd just like to follow up on Robin's comments with her organization with the Dump Stray Cats. She's been working with us for a little over a year now. She's definitely been helpful. We do budget. We have a budget line within our budget, police department budget. You approved last year of $2,500, and that's been what we've been working on with her from this point. But again, she has been helpful, and her organization is definitely worth keeping around. Follow-up, we did host an outreach event on September 7th. We did the Spider-Man movie on North Street. I appreciate the support from everyone here and the support of Closing Down the Street for us. It was a good turnout, and I'd like to just also thank Something Sweet and Alejandro's for helping us that evening with some donations for the residents that did attend. Last meeting, I was asked a question by Alderman Tobin in regards to marijuana. I actually brought with me this evening the actual law itself, so I can give you the specifics and what was changed, and the change just went into effect at the end of August of this year. So previously, the law of unlawful possession of marijuana was a violation, and it was any amount of marijuana up to 25 grams classified as that law. Above 25 grams or anyone that was caught in possession of marijuana in public view or smoking was a misdemeanor, which was criminal possession of marijuana. So the new law, they actually only changed the lower levels of the marijuana sections, and they changed some of the fines. When they talk about decriminalizing it, they changed it to violations, which is similar to a traffic summons, and they designated the fines on that. So the new law is they broke the unlawful possession of marijuana into a first and second degree. Both of them are violations. Unlawful possession of marijuana in the second degree is when you not only possess any amount of marijuana less than one ounce, and that's punishable by a fine of $50, no more than $50. The new section off of this is unlawful possession of marijuana in the first degree, and that's when you possess an aggregate weight of more than one ounce of marijuana, but no more than two ounces of marijuana. So from one ounce to two ounces is unlawful possession of marijuana in the first degree, and that is punishable by a fine not more than $200. Anything from two ounces, above two ounces, is now considered criminal possession of marijuana, and then the other charges above that with the sale and possession of larger quantities have not changed. So there's really, as much as is talked about decriminalizing, there's still sanctions for possessing any small amount of marijuana as well.
It's punishment, it's, yeah, it wouldn't be a crime. It'd be a violation and offense, so.
And we also briefly spoke about driving under the influence. There's no difference, driving under the influence of marijuana or any drug versus driving under the influence of alcohol. We will treat it the same. The fines are the same. The sanctions are the same. We are training our staff to better detect it, but a lot of people believe that it doesn't impact them, and they can drive, but it actually does, and there's studies that do show that, and there's statistics that do show that it does have an impact on driving. So we will do everything we can to, on the enforcement end, and I think the education and training will just excel from here based on the changes in laws.
I just had one question. So with alcohol, you have a way to determine it objectively. How does law enforcement determine being under the influence? Is that empirical, or is there, how does that work?
So there is still the field test. The standard is field sobriety testing. If you fail those, you're still impaired. It doesn't say whether you are impaired under a drug, whether it's prescription medication or illegal drugs or alcohol. And then we have DREs, the Drug Recognition Experts. They're trained above and beyond the average officer. It's months of training and recertification, and they come in and do more of like a medical test on them. Then we could also use the blood and urine analysis to determine that. Unfortunately, they're not as immediate as it would be with alcohol, where we have a PBT and a data master that's available to us all the time. So it's a little bit more work. That's why I say the training aspect will definitely pick up from here going forward.
But the sobriety test is exactly the same as it's always been. Great, thank you.
Chief, were you finished?
I have one other thing, real quick. A question came up, Alderman Kleiner. I did some research based on the traffic circle. We did have the speed trailer out there in August, from August 16th to August 24th. During that seven-day period, 53,023 cars passed that, and that was coming down the hill into the traffic circle from wayway on the down county Route 78. The average speed during that week was 36 miles per hour, which is above our 30 mile an hour speed limit in the city. However, just above the traffic circle is the town Walkfield Line, where the speed limit is 45. So as you come down the hill, it's 45, and it immediately changes to 30. So they are at least slowing down as they enter into the traffic circle. In regards to traffic accidents, I started doing some research on it. I did not get to drill down specifically into the circle, but in that immediate area of the traffic circle in 2018, there was 14 reported accidents, and thus far in 2019, there's been eight. So we're not seeing any significant difference based on that.
Any other questions for the chief? Alderman Tobin?
About the traffic circle, one of our constituents mentioned that he's seen people make a left into the pharmacy before the traffic circle, come up the hill. Could there be a sign there that says no left turn, or, it's illegal, right? It's a double line?
I'd have to actually go out and look and see how far back that is.
Okay.
Do you recall?
It is a double line. If it's safe, usually, they do make the left-hand turn.
I think it's before the circle.
It's way before the circle, yeah. It's way before, and it is solid double yellow line, but if people, you know, if they feel it's safe and there's nothing coming, because you can clear it, there's a clear distance, line of sight is very clear, if they can make it safely.
So you wouldn't put a no-turning sign or anything?
I don't know if it's needed. We haven't had any.
I think the statistics show that there's not a huge issue there right now, and I'm not saying that one isn't bad. I agree, if there's one injury or anything from it, that's bad, but even with the double yellow line there, like I said, I believe it is prior to the traffic circle. It would be nothing different than turning into someone's driveway if you're crossing the double yellow line.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you.
City Clerk, John?
Just, early voting is going to be coming up. We should be getting messages from the Board of Elections on that in your mail on when that's going to happen. It's going to be a whole.
In Middletown, there's going to be one location for early voting, and that will be at the senior center. And it is going to be different times. If I remember, it's sometimes it's like 9:00 in the morning till like 3:00 in the afternoon, and it changes time. I think on Saturday, it's like in the afternoon, 1:00 to 9:00 at night, but those times will
be on our website, and that should be mailed to you from the Board of Elections.
Any questions for John? Public hearings and grievances?
Nothing this evening.
Petitions and complaints?
Nothing this evening.
Fortunately, remarks of the mayor? Nothing this evening. All right. I'm going to start around the room, but I just want to start it out. I don't know how many people know that one of our aldermen and his lovely wife just had a baby boy, and Alderman Green, I want to congratulate you and your family, and best of luck, and God bless you all. All right. Alderman Burr, please.
Congratulations to Alderman Green. Wish him the best. Thank you.
And congratulations to Alderman Green for his new addition to his family. Wish him many success and blessing to him and his wife with the new baby boy. I know he's watching. Did a good job, Alderman Green. Also, Sprow and I, the last past Saturday, we had our fourth ward constituents meeting. It was very informative. I'd just like to thank everyone that came out to join us, and we'll do it again next time. Thank you.
Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. Congratulations, Andrew. We've all said it. As Andrew says, meet the future alderman. I think it's Henry Thomas Green, but a very, very handsome young man, so we'll be looking forward to meeting him. Brink is not here. I mentioned the Touch a Truck event is this Saturday in between Cottage and Montgomery, the area of the farm market, and that's from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And I just want to quickly, since today is Constitution Day, September 17th, where we recognized the signing of the Constitution in 1787, so I just want to read the preamble. "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity to ordain and establish this Constitution for the United States of America." And that's what we take our oath of allegiance to first when we were sworn in as aldermen, so I just want to remind people of that. This Friday, there will be a global mass day of action to, mostly by young people, but hopefully a lot of other people will be involved to, and it's, some call it a strike, but it's the mass day, it's a cry from young people to stop destroying the planet and take some action, so I hope they get a huge turnout for that. Other than that, and of course, I'm just going to ask tonight, because I'm not going to talk about the local law in the race, but I'm going to ask that when we introduce the local law, that we don't just say, consider it read, it's very short, that we actually read it. So, okay.
We will absolutely read the local law.
So people be aware of it, and Alderman Massey has said that we will not be voting on it at the next council meeting, but the meeting after that, so. And I have written out, I didn't get a chance to make enough copies, but I've written out my public position on it for anyone who wants to see it, so I will make some more copies and send it around. Thank you.
Thank you, Jer. Alderman Graham Kazun?
Good evening. I just want to mention, in response to our audit tonight, I want to just say that I think that those results, those very positive results, are a testament to the work of our city treasurer, Don Parris, and his team over there in finance, and I just want to take the opportunity to publicly say thank you to Don and everyone who works in finance that keep us so solvent and so well organized, and with the Moody's rating that seems to just keep going up. They're going to give us a new letter soon. But also, my best wishes to Alderman Green, and as I love to call her, the Lady Green, on the birth of their son. All my best wishes to them. I know they're home enjoying him right now, and he should not be watching this. He should be enjoying that baby. So back to that, Andrew, and that's all I have. Good night.
Alderman Johnson?
Thank you. Let's see, to the Greens, may the force be with them. There's two halves of your life, before kids and after kids. Welcome to the second half of your life. We'll see how it goes. We'll see how it goes. Actually, Alderman Kleiner and I coincidentally got to attend Mr., I'm sorry, Sean Patrick Belloni's meeting on gun control. I found it a teachable moment for me. Both sides of the conversation were well represented, and we'll see if federal government can move forward in any constructive manner. As the liaison to the school district, I wanted to call your attention, the article was in the paper Friday, where Mr. Coats was able to kind of document the financial benefit of the sports complex, and according to the county, an event like the one they'll be scheduling shortly may bring two million dollars into Orange County, and that goes to vendors throughout both the Towne-Walkville and the city of Middletown, so we certainly appreciate that. I occasionally help out Lyndon Knapp at the Lyndon Knapp concession stand at the football stadium, and we were quite busy the other night. We sold eighteen hundred dollars' worth of cheeseburgers and fries and things like that. So it's always a good event. We, the score with Kingston was lopsided. It was Friday the thirteenth, but the arena is just outstanding, the scoreboard. Coach took me out onto the field just to kind of examine the turf, and it's, it's state-of-the-art, it's great for the kids, it's great safety, it's great sport. We're making our name for ourselves throughout the state with the events we get to hold there. It's a beautiful thing, and I thank all involved for making it happen. Dump strays, I just want to reiterate, Robin's done a great job. The mayor had commented to me that he really wanted to focus on Washington Street because of the equilibrium, and we're trying to promote that area, so I will help Robin in targeting the approximately forty cast that live there, and we'll see if we can make the world a better place. Code enforcement? You're listening? You're listening, Jacob? You're listening? Okay. I just wanted to reiterate, you know, the conversations we're having have nothing, there's no intent at all to diminish the effectiveness, the conscientiousness of the code enforcement staff, so that should be the furthest thing from anybody's mind about that. Shortly after I got into the council, it occurred to me that code, the code manual is one of the most important instruments we have for quality of life for our residents, because nobody gets irked more than when they see something where they can't really fix it, they're next door to it, they're around the block from it, it affects them. So for me, code enforcement is a very important tool, and for us to periodically take the pulse to make sure that we're using that tool to the best of our ability, there's nothing negative about that. I think it should be all taken as a very positive step, so I hope you'll reiterate that to your staff as well. Local law, I did get to speak with Jerry as we left the high school the other day. It was a good conversation. I think I understand his point of view. I don't happen to share it, but I understand it, and I'm looking forward to that discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Johnson. Alderman Tobin, before you get started, I want to congratulate you on your position with the region. Please.
Just, nothing really, just like to congratulate Andrew and his new family, and his new chapter in life. It's very exciting. Thank you.
Thank you. Unfinished business?
Nothing this evening.
New business?
We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Jean-François, who authorized the mayor to sign an agreement with Petsalai for a period of September eighteenth through December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, for additional shelter services for the city.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Jean-François. Any comments, questions? Alderman Johnson.
I just want to take a chance to clarify, you know, most of the agencies in the area have become what's referred to as a no-kill environment, and that's a good thing for animals, but it's a bad thing for capacity. So we have Middletown, we have Port Jervis, now we have Petsalai as a backup, and that's a good thing. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Roll.
Graham Consoom.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Graham Consoom, to authorize the treasurer to transfer thirteen hundred dollars within the two thousand and nineteen operating budget of the Middletown Recreation and Parks Department due to a shortage of lifeguards this summer.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Graham Consoom. Comments, questions? Roll.
Graham Consoom.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Jean-François, to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of twenty-two thousand, twenty-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents within the two thousand and nineteen budget to balance short in overs in the two thousand and nineteen budget.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Jean-François. Comments, questions? Roll.
Graham Consoom.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Kleiner, to close Montgomery Street for the, on the corner of Roberts and Railroad on Sunday, October sixth, two thousand and nineteen, from nine AM to three PM for the annual fire prevention open house.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Comments, questions? Roll.
Graham Consoom.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean-François, seconded by Alderman Burr, to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of twenty thousand, four hundred dollars within the fire department's two thousand and nineteen budget to cover repairs to engine six and lockers for career members.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean-François, seconded by Alderman Burr. Any comments, questions? Roll.
Graham Consoom.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Graham Consoom, seconded by Alderman Johnson, to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of one thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars and nineteen cents from the general fund balance for charges from OMEGA Title Services for the purchase of Seven Canal Street.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Graham Consoom, second, excuse me, by Alderman Johnson. Any comments, questions? Roll.
Graham Consoom.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean-François, seconded by Alderman Kleiner, to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of twenty-two thousand dollars within the DPW two thousand and nineteen budget for repairs to equipment.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean-François, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any comments, questions? Roll.
Graham Consoom.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Tobin, to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents from the general fund balance and within the DPW two thousand and nineteen budget for traffic and paint, CDL, personnel training, office expense, and personnel services.